These aren't going to be trafficked by the students to view?
No, no. The students will not be coming to me. I travel, so I put it all in my RAV4 and I go to them. I will be going to the Botanical Gardens. The classroom setting is not me. I just need to be able to haul it home and to have the shelving in order. Because when you work with clay, it's a two-step process. You're hand-building and you're working with clay. It needs to dry in order before it can go into the kiln. Where am I going to put 20 students' artwork to dry? Can you imagine like, you know, 20 little pots laying around? It's got to dry for a week before I put them in the kiln. So I do need access to shelving, you know, and all of that. And like I said, our basement being a partial basement gives my husband the Apple workspace that you need to have a functioning home, but does not give me enough space to do that. I've got, you know, the kilns because I work with that. But no, there will not be any signage in front of the house. There will not be any traffic. My neighbors won't even know that I'm there. My art studio, you know, I am not noisy. My art, I, you know, I'm not going to make any noise. I don't make any odor. It's just going to be the visceral presence of having, you know, a cute little cottage in my backyard.
How are you going to get the sculptures from the coop to your studio?
That's me. Carry, they have to stay on a drywall board. So I'm the one in charge of very carefully, you know, carrying them from my garage, you know, back to the, back to the studio and they slide on shelves and stay there. But yeah, my neighbors, like I said, aren't even going to know that I'm there. There are not going to be people parking in front of my house or coming to class or anything like that. I offer a mobile service. So it's up to me to carry it from, from the art studio to my car and then I go to, I go to them.
Any other questions, Mia?
What is, is there a neighborhood down here?
That is NWTC.
Oh, okay.
There, there was supposedly what they call the Orchard. There was an apple orchard back there. But NWTC has torn down most of those trees. There's probably maybe 15 feet of trees left, but NWTC is in the back of them. So we kind of back up to the, there's a little wood, much, a little bit.
Is it a tech center?
Yeah, there's a brand-new tech center back there, so lots of tractors and.
The power utility center just opened up?
Yeah.
And you've talked to the neighbors in there?
Yes, yep, yep, I have. Right, yep. And like I said, you know, I kept it as low as I go. The, you know, I had, I personally knocked on everybody's door and said this, you know, I'm new to the neighborhood. I don't want to infringe on, on anything. We're keeping it, you know, they were concerned it was going to be 10-foot ceilings and, you know, like a metal building kind of thing. I said, no, it's going to be a cute little cottage, you know, and being in an artist's neighborhood already, it's like, okay, we're already making plans, you know, to come and, to come and hang out and, and learn things and, and do things in that neighborhood. But I told them, once it's up and if that back line, if that trees doesn't provide enough coverage for them, I would be willing to put, you know, a couple more cedars or some, some sort of brush plants or something like that in order to, to give them a natural look instead of, you know, a siding. I told them I would even consider green siding, you know, to, to make it as invisible or less of a visual footprint as I can possibly go and they, you know, they were all up to that. We're actually, as soon as the snow melts in our backyard, I have invited them, you know, to come and walk my backyard with me. And it's like, okay, this is, you know, where it's going. So, you know, we are all in a collaboration of the best place to do this and because it's offset already with those two-story evergreen trees already there, you know, I'm just going to tuck it back there. And everybody to the right isn't, isn't going to see us because it's going to be back already behind our pool area. And those that can see us, I will make it, whatever they would ask of me, I would, I would do for them to do that.
Would you be willing to bring some architectural drawings to show us exactly what you're doing?
For the building?
Yeah.
Sure, I did, in my application, there was a little, it was a quick drawing from Menards. Right, right. So it's, it's going to have siding, it's going to have windows, it'll have French doors on it. It will not have a garage door at all. So the access is going to be by French doors. It will have a bay window in the front, so to allow as most light as I, as I can. Light, uh, windows going across the back to provide light. They will be a little higher just because I need equipment to be underneath it for storage, cupboards and, you know, that type of thing underneath it. And asphalt roof, landscapes, little trees, little flowers, little things kind of in front of it, so it will be as aesthetically pleasing as we, you know, can, can make it.
And you went to a four, four pitch roof.
Yeah, the pitch is low.
Keep it as low as nice as possible. It's also not protruding.
Yeah, so we're not peeking up. It's a real squatty, real squatty pitch with, with asphalt shingles and siding, French doors, no garage door, and just windows for ventilation. And it will be heated just because I need to work in winter. No running water, no sewer, none of that. It's just I need heat in order to, to work in, in winter. And it's just me.
Have you always done this type of work?
Yes.
And then did you, have you always worked out at home or what?
Yes, yep. You know, these, these day and ages, there's so many people that work out at home and fortunately artists are, are one of them. You've heard the term serving artist. Well, you know, it's kind of for a reason. Because the more overhead I have, I have to transfer that into my work. So all of a sudden, if I'm at home and doing things, my $15 piece all, all, you know, becomes $40 just because of the overhead of renting a building or a shared space or, or something like that. So I have always worked from home. Well, my business, the, the artwork part of it has always been from home, but I have worked, I just left, I was an art instructor at the Royal West Art Museum for the last eight years. So I do, I did work out of home, but as building and constructing artwork, yes, I have always worked out of home just because, you know, serving artist, that's a really, that's an existing word because, you know, anything above that cost makes my piece go up. And then all of a sudden, when you're sitting it in your booth at an art fair and instead of having a $20 piece which probably would have, you know, sold very quickly, you're, you're more up, you know, it just gains dollar value because you're up. I did the farmer's market on Broadway in Green Bay for, for five years and I certainly loved that too. But there again too, I mean, in, in this day and age, the price needs to be at a dollar value which in order to, you know, to sell, and I make lots of functional different things, so it's not just the pretty for the walls, but it is, you know, also functional. But price is what makes a piece of artwork sell. And, well, even Nora Rockwell had a studio in his backyard. So that's, you know, that's just an aspect, unfortunate aspect to, to an artist is to be able to, to work from home and produce, you know, the best work that you can. And I decide full selling, I also do a couple of art shows a year or two and, and like I said, I have done farmer's market on Broadway and so I'm giving back to the community and being a teaching artist too. You know, the Botanical Gardens have opened their arms to, to me to offer hand-building with clay classes for adults. So you can look for that in June and August and children's classes too.
They'll be out of your.
Out of Botanical Gardens.
Oh, Botanical Gardens.
Yep, nothing comes to me except I need to bring home, if we're hand-building with clay for Botanical Gardens, so I cannot leave their pieces at the Botanical Gardens for a week to dry. So all, part of the things that I do to share the art experience for everyone and especially clay is I need to bring it home to me because I'm responsible for their, their artwork. If I leave them behind and somebody touches or breaks and all of a sudden it's like, okay. You know, so I need to be able to just take their things home and find an area for it to dry before I can put it into the kiln. Then we go back to the Botanical Gardens or other locations and then they glaze and then it comes home again for second firing and then goes back to Botanical Gardens for pickup. So I've begun a relationship with them and I'm looking forward to, to more classes too and I hope that they're not the only ones. I hope to get involved with the city. I just learned that the city has a community enrichment class program that it just showed up, which I hope to, to get involved with next year. I just, I just need space.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The kiln you were talking about, is that at Botanical Gardens or is it going to be in the structure?
It is in the studio.
In the studio?
Yep.
Okay.
Runs out 220 and then the electrician will.
We'll rewire the house.
Right.
To have an independent 100 amp system going out to the house.
Right.
Out to the building, just like we did our last building.
Right, it has its own electrical panel.
So you're going to be firing stuff out of there. Again, I'm unfamiliar with clay. It seems like that's the bulk of some of your work.
Right.
Is there an odor or smell that comes from clay firing and kiln work?
Nope.
Nope, nope.
It just needs to be ventilated, so the only sound would be an internal fan. You would hear it in the studio, but you will not, no.
You need occasional tinkling noise.
Right, yeah, that's not good. Tinkling is not good.
Yeah.
And I also hand, I, I paint with acrylic paints too, so, you know, there is.
So the variance is basically the fact that the proposed 1,200 foot structure plus the garage puts it over the 1,260.
Right.
So have you proposed for, for us yet the need for 1,200 feet?
No. When I had applied for the variance, they had just requested information about, you know, what I wanted. It doesn't have to be the 1,200 feet, but to me, it's like, if I'm going to build this and this is going to be my forever home, I don't want to have to be here again in two years saying, I need a six-foot or an eight-foot addition, you know, to, in order to continue. I thought this is going to be it. Let's do it the best that we can possibly do, you know, at, at this time. When I was at Menards getting my little drawing and things, talking to the gentleman, he said, well, you know, for $200 you can go from 36 to 40 feet. I was going to cap it at 36, but it's like, right now for $200 more dollars in construction supplies to gain four feet, which to you is only this, but to me, it's like, oh my gosh. I mean, that allows me floor to ceiling shelving or more cupboards or something. And for me to have this much more feet on 1.3 acres for $200 more dollars was a given. If I need to, to compact it, you know, I certainly will, but like I said, I don't want to have to come back and ask you again in a few years that, you know, I have outgrown, things are going really well, Green Bay loves me and I need more space for, you know, to store the, the projects and things that are going on for the community.
I think, I think for me, where I sit with this is I need more. You know, you had said you'd talk to the neighbors.
Right.
I mean, it's a large variance request. I mean, it's almost the size of the current home from a structure standpoint. I would like to hear.
Because our house is 12 to, little over 12,000 or 2,000 square foot, our house, our houses, yeah.
Footprint is 1,260 and then 670 plus change for the attached garage.
So if the, if the structure was 588, we have no problem. So cutting this current size of what's proposed in half makes it work, correct?
Close, yep.
Because it has to be under.
By 1,260.
Yeah, and we're on the, the 1.3 acres. And as I was talking with everyone too, they had said that because we're considered rural residential, that there is this leeway in order to, to get the space needed.
Yeah, so I mean, for me, I, I'll be honest, I'm kind of sitting on a no right now, but you've proposed some things that make it interesting for me to continue to listen. The size, I'd like to know more about the needs. So maybe to Tom's point, like, how's it going to be laid out? I appreciate 100%.
Right.
$200 for X amount of square footage, but it's a large variance request. So I was trying to assess things based on needs versus wants.
Right.
And that's more of a want than a need, so I would like to know if, if you're going to do 1,200 feet, what is 1,200 feet needed for?
I can, I can tell you.
And then the other things you had said, there was a couple of structures in the area already that had already gotten, had some large things.
Yep, we have.
I don't know, she can, can she find that or the city?
We have one, the building by the pool that holds all of the, the pool things is.
And buying lawnmower yard care stuff.
Yep, because we've got 1.3 acres, there's lots of stuff that needs to, you know, make, keep it pretty.
Yeah.
It's 12 by, 12 by 16, which is all the pool equipment and the lawnmower and.
I think he was asking about other properties in the area.
Yeah. I'm thinking if you did some more preparation in your, in your presentation and came, again, I'm, you brought up some things that are swaying me to a yes. I don't know if, I don't even know if that matters. That might be a one no vote.
Right.
But to me, what I'm looking for is, we don't necessarily need to hear it today, but like, why is 1,200 versus 600? Because if we went to 600, we're talking a 12 square foot variance. So there's, that's, that gets us where you're not even here.
Right.
So there's a reason why.
Right.
You had said the neighbors are okay with it.
Yep.
I'd love to, we like to, I won't say we, I like to see if, if you're going to say, hey, neighbors are okay with it, something written.
Okay.
Hey, here are the five neighbors surrounding us, they're totally okay with it.
Okay.
And then the other thing is, you had mentioned there was other properties. So providing, I don't know how that works, David, but if they came and said, hey, here are three or four properties that have large structures built already.
I have the address.
Yeah, like if they provided that, we'll be able to pull that up, maybe if we defer this for a month, to say, hey, these are ones that have larger structures on them so we can look at the community versus, is that something we can do?
Sure, we could.
Yeah.
Oh, that's.
Well, the reason, one of the things that I have written down is the reason why I need this space is because I currently have four kilns. One of them is glass. I have a hydraulic press, a wet sock. I need a 10-foot square foot work table. I have a table that is specifically for glass cutting and cabinets for storage. I need drying racks to hold all of these students' artworks and display cabinets just for finishware. I also have a slab roller which helps me roll out clay instead of taking, you know, mom's rolling pin to do that. I have a machine that specifically allows me to, to roll out the clay and a couple of file cabinets for all my papers.
Yeah, and I, and just, I appreciate all of that.
That's okay.
You're asking for a, a variance on a size of a structure. I own a business, right? So I would love to figure out a way to reduce my costs on any front possible.
Right.
So I can appreciate that point of view.
Right.
But it sounds like you're a full-fledged system here.
Right.
So I think I have to make decisions as, as a property owner within a business where I have to defer costs or eat that or whatever, so.
In tours, I had 720 square feet and onto the walls.
Yeah, but 720 still worked, right? And it's still, and now it's a 100 square foot variance versus.
Right.
So that, that's where, again, I'm one person on a committee. So that's just, I just wanted to let you know, that's my thoughts. I don't know where everybody sits, but that's kind of where I'm at.
I'm more, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Did we hear anything from any of the neighbors? Do we have any of the neighbors here tonight to speak to this? Have we heard from the older person in terms of, so nobody's, no, I mean, yeah, you could say, oh, I got to put the challenge to you to give us the positive support, but the lack of them attending is, you know, a lack of negative feedback, right?
Right, and the building is not, does not, like I said, this was just the grandest it could be for me at this point.
If I can, I just, the other thing is, David, do we, do we have, is this is all okay from a, a home-based business standpoint for, for any sort of use, right? This isn't a use issue at all. This is purely a square footage issue in terms of the variance request.
Correct.
I, I've got some familiarity with, with this type of operation and I, you know, I've seen, you know, these kilns aren't small and, you know, you don't have something right next to it. You've got a little bit of.
You've got to keep my nerve space a part of Roman. That's the, that's the volume of it.
And I have, I have three which are about this big and my glass kiln, because it's oval, sits about like this.
Yeah. So, I mean, it is a, it is a big ask in terms of the, the square footage. I have a thing that, that I kind of like home-based businesses. I like people trying to, and especially when they're working on it with an acre of land. I mean, it doesn't always have to be duck ponds and the apple hills, right? I mean, let's use the land, right?
Right, that's one of the reasons why we chose this property.
Yeah, but, so I'm, I'm okay with approving the requests as it's been presented to us today.
Yeah, I would like to get a feel for, for where we are in this.
Yeah.
I, I would agree with Noel. Given the size of the lot, really, I mean, it's different kind of from the first one we were talking about, which we granted with the size. And, but I was talking about a different structure, but I think it was well thought out, you know, what you were doing and given your employment situation or the way in your employment and being kind of a self-employed and different type of profession, right? It's not something where you go to an office every day and you got an office building. And she's been working from home for many years and given the size of her house, the amount of acres she has and backed up behind her, there's not really, you know, anything other than NWTC.
Yeah, and an institutional neighbor too.
Right.
Not another residential neighbor.
Right, so I, you know, I, I think there is a hardship given her situation and I think that's random stand. I think even though it's a bigger structure, I'm okay with it.
Okay. If you're not too familiar with it, NWTC is here and Mason Street goes this way, okay? You've got a stoplight at the corner of Country Club Road and Mason Street. So this is Country Club and you go down a ways and now you're turning and you're at the property on Cleve, okay? This is a pretty upscale neighborhood, okay? This isn't like on the near west side, all right? This is some pretty, pretty pricey properties. And I, I guess I've got three concerns here. One is the size of it. I mean, I, I understand you've got 1.3 acres. I get that. But that's a big building that you're proposing there. I mean, there are people who have houses smaller than your art studio. The other concern I have is this is a business. I mean, it might be home-based, but this is a business. And one of the reasons why I asked you about the traffic is when you look here, there's not really, it's, it's not too conducive to students coming and picking up work.
They will not.
Well, I know, and that was why I asked the question, okay? So we're, we're kind of through the parking place.
The neighborhood, the houses that were built in like 1960s, 1970s, the, the ones, the, the ones that you're speaking about, the, the high, is, is the final, the next road over the Country Club Road?
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, they're totally out of our league. When I rounded that corner, I was shocked to see the caliber of houses that were on that one, I think it's Indian Hill Drive.
Indian Hill.
Which they have, is on my list of people that have the extra garages in their backyard. So our, our neighborhood is established. It is a dead-end road too, which makes it really low traffic because, which is nice because anybody that's on that road, we know, we pretty much know them. So if that makes, you know, any difference either, but, you know, yeah, it's an older established neighborhood.
I guess I'm kind of leaning toward Tommy is as far as getting a, a bit more of an enforcement with respect to the, the neighborhood as well as the older one. And the size still kind of, kind of does bother me. I mean.
And we even looked at a commercial property and there's just no way that her, the way she makes money, there's no way we can afford that.
Yes, I understand and, but we're, part of our guidelines, when we look at approving variances, is that economic conditions are not to play a role.
Absolutely.
With respect to approving a variance.
And I can, I can bring it down, you know, if absolutely necessary, but like I had said, this was my one chance to, you know, to do it without having to, to ask for more.
And sometimes when you buy properties, you don't necessarily know, like.
Right.
Here are variances. You probably buy, we have this area, let's build a studio in the back and all of a sudden you go to do it.
Right.
Oh, so I can appreciate.
Right, and in tours too, it was just building permit and we have to have so much green space and we were good. But, you know, the lack of our neighbors being here, you know, I guess, or letters being sent.
Yeah.
Kind of tells you that, you know, that they're okay. But I will do whatever you need me to do in order to, I will shrink. If you need me to shrink, I can certainly, I can certainly do that.
David, a quick question.
Sure.
When a variance is applied for, are the, the neighbors notified automatically by letter?
Yes, because I knocked on each one of their doors.
We went to every neighbor?
Yeah, after I, after you guys had sent me the letter, they had notified me that our neighbors were going to get the letter also. So I knocked on everybody's door and sat down and talked to these, it's an older neighborhood, so my neighbors on one side are high 70s, the neighbors on the other side, well, their house is going to be for sale. But they too were in their 70s. These, these people have been in the neighborhood, you know, 20, 30, 40 years. Across the street, the gentleman too, I mean, even though he's across the street and doesn't participate in my backyard, it's like, okay, it's, you know, it's going all this way too. So I have physically sat, sat in their house.
We're actually going to invite them over and we're going to work.
Right.
A community decision. It's not just we're building in here, this is what you're going to do. We're going to take them into consideration where we're going to put it.
And just because I'm, I'm asking for this variance for this size, Billy, doesn't mean this is the way it's going to end up. Because if you allow me to do this, this would be the absolute maximum. Once I get my neighbors in the backyard and if they, you know, actually I have, you know, a stake in the ground with some, with some yarn or whatever stretched out and it's like, okay, this is, you know, I will comply with whatever they tell me about, you know, whatever I will do to, to make them as happy as we can possibly be. But, you know, I just thought, well, since we were here, I would go to the maximum and if you were uncomfortable with that, I will make do with what I can. Rather than going up, I mean, I can make my footprint less. I could go to the, you know, 30 feet, 27 feet, but.
Yeah.
The need to go up, one year may, I may be here asking to go up. Now, is that the way to go? Probably not.
I think we should be moving along here.
Sorry.
At a point where we've heard everything.
We just, we just said yes to a 24 by 32-foot addition on a much smaller property with a lot less discussion than this.
Yeah, I'd like to, let me just, you guys can sit down if, go ahead, if you'd like. I'm for this and I'll tell you why. The, I think that with all due respect to the planning department, I think they have interpreted the ordinance incorrectly. I think that the size of the structure is 1,260 plus 672. In that case, they don't need a variance. That's my justification. And the reason why is it's right in the ordinance. Let me read you what it says here for 13615B. An accessory structure shall be considered attached and an integral part of the principal structure when it is connected by an enclosed passenger. In this case, it's an, it's an attached garage. That's why I brought up the question a little earlier with the, with the other gentleman. I, I know that we've heard this before, but in this case, it, it penalizes the applicant twice. First, they don't get credit for the attached garage as part of their principal structure. Second, it's, it's then called an accessory structure, which puts them in the position of having to justify a second additional, a second accessory structure with what they're proposing. Now, this is rural, this is RR, right, David?
Yes.
They can have a mid-maximum size first structure of 2,000. They can actually have a second one of 1,000. Okay, they built their garage first, but.
Yeah, no, then that, then, then this is the primary accessory use and the garage is secondary, even if you count it as a separate structure.
If you count it as a separate structure, which is what.
It's under 1,000 and this one's under two, so we're good to go.
That's the way it looks to me.
I'll buy that for a dollar.
I mean, I'm not trying to. I'm not trying to you on the spot, but I'm trying to.
I can respond. An attached accessory structure is an accessory structure.
Yeah.
So you could run a.
Quite what I've just read to you.
You could run a 30-foot breezeway to a 50,000 square foot storage barn and say that's an accessory garage. So that interpretation, unfortunately, in my opinion, is incorrect.
And I, I would buy it to the extent that we're talking about a 30-foot breezeway. That's why I would buy it more, that argument more for the gentleman that we gave on a three to two vote, variance request. Because this was just a breeze. This is not. This is, this is actually part, part and parcel of the structure. This is not, this is, this is actually part, part and parcel of the structure, and I go by what the ordinance says. That, that makes it an integral part of the principal structure, which to me is nineteen thirty-two.
And it is an integral part of the structure and has to meet principal structure setbacks. However, it is an accessory use, it's a storage use, which accessory to the residential use, you can't live in that accessory garage by itself. You can't do anything with that accessory garage if it was not attached to the residential structure, if it wasn't subordinate as far as a structure and a use.
So how is the, how is the, what is the issue then with the two structures?
Well, the issue with the two structures, it's just the size, it's that the accessory structures, both the attached and the detached, are greater than the principal structure. That's what the variance is for.
So for example. That's why they're getting double, they're getting double penalized.
Correct. But it could seem. Just in a theoretical sense, let's say, I decided to make the garage part of the house. At, right, and then I build a second garage that I can drive to behind that was under a thousand, you said a thousand?
Two thousand.
No, the initial is two thousand, you said the accessory is a thousand?
Correct.
So if you made the current garage part of the house, it's still under two thousand, and then you made a thousand garage, use the garage whatever, however you want. In theory, that would work.
I think the rest of the folks here don't wanna listen to our philosophical discussions. I just presented the reason why I would vote yes on this. If I have two other votes that are yes, let's go.
Make a motion to approve the variance requested.
Second. We have a motion made and seconded to approve the variance requested by the Zanders on Cleese Street, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
No. Three, two, you're good.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very. Next, we have item number five. Mr. Pauline Sunny Lane property.
I'm Brad Boucher, brother of the wife or the brother-in-law.
Okay.
What we have here is a, kind of a useless existing garage. I have nine by seven overhead door on here, so it's actually only six feet high. And it's basically a one feet garage with a big lean-to on it, so as far as parking vehicles in it, you can't even get a truck in. So the only variance thing that I'm here for is to push it to the side block variance. I wanna try to push it as far over as we can, that way I can put a eight foot by eighteen wide overhead door, so I can get two vehicles in there. So obviously, the further over we push it to the right, the better it'll look from the road too. I don't know if you have this, you have this picture kind of, or not?
Yeah.
So the further over we can push it, the better it'll be. As far as rear yard area, I'm less than the thirty percent of that, the impervious surface. We're gonna take out that fifteen by seven right between the deck and the garage and house. That way we can put it over to the right side of the driveway, so the car can swing in better. All the other rules, I think, we're good on, size of it, less than the footprint of the house too, which was the issue on the previous.
Did you, the neighbor on the, what, on this document, be the right?
Yeah, Nick talked to him already, he talked to him, he's fine with it. The guy behind him actually has a big garage too, so.
So the issue here, David, is the size.
The only one we got, yep, the side yard setback, that's it.
I'm a side yard setback going from required four feet to three feet. But the other is the rear yard coverage, and if you have different calculations than we came up with, we calculated thirty-eight percent of the rear yard is gonna be covered with accessory structures.
See, I got twenty-four percent depending on.
You're currently at twenty-six.
I guess, depending on where you count the rear yard, I guess.
Yeah.
Because you got that jut out of the house and.
Both thirty-three hundred square feet of rear yard, the garage, proposed garage is nine hundred and fifty-two square feet, the deck is three hundred square feet.
We can get rid of the deck too.
Twelve fifty-two.
I didn't know the deck counted.
Well, I'm just giving you where we got the numbers from.
Sure, I got the same thing, thirty-two ninety-nine fifty-two, that's where I got my twenty-four point three percent. But we can get rid of the deck, we'll do whatever we have to.
Is that, is that part of the proposed design of the new, new garage? Did you hear the deck?
No, it wasn't, because my math, I didn't know the deck counted against it.
Okay, to the extent the deck counts against it, he's at what you have here is thirty-eight.
Yeah, that's not drastic.
Deck does count against it though?
It's considered structure, yes.
Okay.
It's a structure. So it does count.
Deck are kinda not very useful either, so that's not an issue either.
It's up to us.
Right.
Do we know eight percent represents, so I don't have to take care and do the math?
Uh, well, I could do the math.
Like, how many, how much is eight percent put in over from square footage?
Um, well, you're asking for complicated math now.
Sorry, you don't have to, if it's your ballpark.
Uh, well, ballpark, he would.
We can gladly get rid of the deck.
Right.
It's kinda rocky.
He would probably, he's about, about two hundred and fifty square feet over.
Got it.
So, not a, not a drastic area, I guess.
Yep.
And it is, a deck is technically considered a structure, but again, it's a deck not over.
Yeah, Paul's explained that you guys think of concrete slab as.
Sensitived, yeah.
Anything permanently affixed to the ground.
Yep.
It's a structure.
Any other discussion, any questions to the app?
Thanks.
No questions, sorry.
It's not, thanks.
I'm in favor of this.
I'm okay, I think you can keep his deck too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna split the flag.
I agree.
You can take it if you want. Yeah, hop, motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we, regarding the Sunny Lane property, we have a motion made by Mr. Biversman, Herman, and seconded by Mr. Hoy. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five, zero. You're good.
Deck stays.
Deck stays.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the reason I don't wanna, unless it's rocky, right in town.
Well, that's, yeah, that's.
Then they're gonna come back and think, yeah, I don't wanna, that's not.
Deck stays, I'm writing it down, thank you.
Okay, item number six, this is the property on Cornelius Drive.
Yes, sir.
Um, what I would like to do, I walk up to them.
Yes, sir.
Uh, let's build a fourteen by twenty-four shed, I'll put it right here, change the setback from fifty-five to thirty-five or forty. I just said thirty-five because then it would line up with their house. Um, the thing I wanna put here is, there is actually, it comes down here, and this is like a drainage ditch, and this literally slopes like down like a forty-five, so if I stand right here, I'm literally like twelve feet below from my house, and then it slopes back up this way towards their yard at like a forty-five. So it's, it's really steep. And then, uh, it comes down through here, and then this part of the yard is sloped again like forty-five down to theirs. This is pretty much the only area that's reasonably flat. And they also have a secondary structure that they have pretty close to the lot line. But then I did talk to all the neighbors, they were okay, I did get Tom, Joel, Brittany, Charlie, they did sign a piece of paper saying that they're perfectly okay with it, they don't have any problems. Um, Tom has the neighborhood association, so I haven't heard anybody complain about it, so that was pretty much my proposal. And I have those names of those sheets that's on.
So the issue here, David, is that it's considered too close by the terms of the number of feet that's supposed to be in the front setback?
Correct, accessory structure should be fifty, as the petition mentioned, fifty-five feet back, so I'm expecting to bring that up to, let's say thirty-five, thirty-five or forty, thirty-five. Unless you wanted to put it at forty.
But it seems to be in line with the, the house to the back, that's what I was asking. I wanna make sure I understand what we're, what we're defining here.
Correct, the house to the, to the north has about a thirty-foot setback, but the property line then also kicks out a little bit further, so he'd be in line. The accessory structure would be in line, be a little bit closer to the, to the street than his personal house, but.
Yeah, that, that's the variance that I thought he really needed, because I think there's something in the ordinance about accessory structure has to be behind the principal structure.
Behind the fifty-five feet.
And that, that, I guess to me, that, that variance crays up more than the, the front, but that would be my justification, I'm okay with this one.
Can you just.
Further questions of the applicant, by the way, I, I wanna.
How heavy is that, you know, the, the trees between where the, where you're looking at the shed and the street?
Well, this tree is still here, which is a god-awful huge chunk of wood, I think it's like this around. And then there's actually cedar line trees are all the way up here that are full grown, and then that silver maple is actually behind it, so the trunk's like right here, where the shed was gonna put is later right here. So all this part is blocked, you literally just see the back half of the street, but the street, this also does slope down like five feet. So I mean, when I stand down here, the street level's probably like somewhere around my chest height, fine.
You'd look to me, sir, that, at least in the Google picture, that there's already some things being stored at approximately the location where you were gonna try to put the shed anywhere?
Um, I think that's on the picture, because I just bought this house in November.
Oh, okay, we'll blame the last guy.
There's, yeah, the only thing that she has there is, she has a really beat up, blown up pool that I'm getting rid of.
Further questions of the gentleman? Okay, if you could sit down, we'll deliberate. I'm okay on the reason, only that, to me, I think we need to specify that he's also okay on the subject variance, in case there's any question later. Well, I would concur with his assessment of the slope going from Humboldt Road down Cornelius. It's, it's a significant slope, and he's picked about the only flat spot he can put a building on it. So I would call it a hardship on landscape.
Sounds like the worst spot he could put it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, and I get the reason for having, you know, accessory buildings in the rear yard, not in the side yard, because essentially he's putting a shed, you know, up to the street, just like the houses are on the street. So, you know, even with the grade variance that we're talking about coming off of Cornelius, you know, I'd be inclined to say, oh, make sure there's some, some shrubs or trees or something that just provides some visual screening. It looks like there's a bunch already there, I guess, I wouldn't wanna see that go away, you know, just to, just to hide the shed as much as possible from the street view, so that we don't look like we're starting to build, you know, we don't wanna have sheds up at the street set, at the front yard setback, that's, that's what the ordinance is for. But yeah, the dynamics of the site are such that that's really the only logical place to put it, so I'm gonna support the requested variance and just encourage the property owner to make sure that's screened as well as possible.
Good, it's a good comment. Great.
Move to approve.
I think, second. Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Halbertson, seconded by Mr. Hoy to approve the variance as requested for the Cornelius Drive property, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was just as requested, not without, not with a condition.
No condition, just friendly suggestion.
Five, zero, you're good.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have another sign. Sir? You're gonna do this?
There we go, all right. I, I don't know if you got this here, you got this stuff?
It's not colored, I'll take it in color.
Well, there you go, there you go, it was in color. Yeah, we're celebrating the hundredth year anniversary, twenty nineteen, from nineteen nineteen to twenty nineteen. There's gotta be all kinds of things that go on this year, celebrations in the parking lot, there's a new video, there's all kinds of committee work and, and things that, you know, groups, when we look at signage, like, you know, from lot three, the previous one, this has gone through tons of committees and processes internal, and we wanna make sure it all fits. We think this fits with what we're all trying to do, um, there's a, there's a whole host of things, there's gonna be a week-long celebration in the parking lot, there's gonna be other stuff at Titletown, purely informational, the little badge area that has, uh, that's on that sheet, there's no advertising, no sponsorship, nothing like that. That's purely one of our logos, no one has seen it yet, we're gonna make an announcement on that, and that's why you're seeing that ink piece on that thing, so. We think it's gonna be nice, there's gonna be more signage of, you know, large signs internally, but externally, looking for that as a temporary sign.
And the way the ordinance is structured, there's just no way around temporary and banners and all that?
Not for that size of building.
Yep.
Questions of Mr. Hanson? This is just for, for the year.
Yeah, it's a twelve to fourteen month, uh, you know, depending on when we're gonna get it up and things like that, and it'll, it'll go this year and partially in the next, but eventually it comes down because twenty nineteen, I, I think it's gonna go, I think they had on the application twelve to fourteen months.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, if you could have a seat for Mr. Hanson? Thoughts?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second. Here we have a motion made and seconded to approve the signed variance request for Maplefield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero, you're good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening. Okay, Mr. Dumas on Chestnut Streets.
I would like to build a three hundred and twenty square foot shed and eliminate all that. I got canopies there right now, which you're eliminating in the City of Green Bay, the temporary structures. With only a single-stall garage, I really don't have anywhere to go with any of my lawn stuff, anything you wanna store separately. It's only a hundred and fifty square feet that you're allowed to have for a shed. The slab is already there for a thirty by forty, I just wanna put a three hundred and twenty foot in front of that, eliminate every other structure back there, basically make a little garden shed. The whole backyard is basically turned into a garden, and it's got a six-foot fence all the way around it, so, and it is an industrial park.
Yeah, you're kind of right in the midst of.
Locked right in. So you're kinda really limited with what you could do. Originally, I wanted to build a bigger one, but I'm older now, I don't need the shed, I'm switching shit down, and I'm gonna actually go to the, just the three hundred and twenty square foot deal and.
You're gonna leave the slab?
Um, I'm actually gonna start cutting parts of that out, I do container gardening, so I got like potatoes set in buckets and stuff like that. I'm gonna start cutting parts of that out of there then and eliminating it to give me more room, but right now I actually have a shed back here, a ten by ten metal one. Once I eliminate that, that'll give you more garden space, and eventually I wanna turn the whole thing back in and eliminate everything else back there, just turn it into a garden, so.
And so the variance, David, he's got too big a accessory structure?
Second accessory structure is proposed.
Yeah, I would've known that, the garage was actually attached at one point and I tore that off, because it was kinda rotted, not thinking that it made a difference. You know, just thought I wanted to get rid of it and have access to the backyard and.
It doesn't to David.
Oh, no, but it.
It does to me.
I've owned this property for like twenty, twenty-five years now, and it's just been an ongoing issue with everything. For a while, I had semi-trailers back there on the slab, you know, because it was in industrial park, well, they rezoned it and stuff, and then got rid of the trailers, and then I went to that temporary structure, and I just wanna build a small shed so I can put my rototiller in there, put all my, your, just your chairs alone, and all your stuff for sitting out for the garden. You got no table room, you got no chairs, so I just look for something to store stuff that's not in a canopy and clean up the whole backyard.
So did you actually more or less run a container business out of there, go to the back, container plant business?
I use this, the semi-trailers to store my stuff and I do a construction, so I couldn't have it outside, so they won't let me build the garage then because of, I was living there back then, and it was zoned industrial at that time. So I just kinda waited it out, kept flip-flopping from semi-trailer to this, then that, I just wanna build a small.
I'm just bringing it up in light of Laura's previous comment upon, about using your land for, I think he's used it about as intensively as it can.
Yeah, it's pretty intense. I mean, I poured that slab in there when I first bought the property twenty-five years ago, because they told me I could build there, while I went back to get the permit in, in the spring, they won't let me build. And then it just kinda skyrocketed, so I did, that's why I went to the semi-trailers, and now it's down to the canopy, which obviously you guys don't like canopies.
So you're, you're proposing, you're proposing a too big of a, of a building, but you're getting rid of a bunch of other things.
I'm gonna eliminate way more than what I'm.
This is a plus.
Oh, yeah, and it's gonna look good.
So when did you do the slab?
Nineteen ninety-four, maybe?
So is a slab considered an accessory, is it, or is because there's nothing on the slab?
Nothing on it.
Right.
It's just impervious.
Yeah. But I did figure out the impervious, I was at like forty-some percent, I think, with that slab and everything, but I am gonna eliminate parts of that slab as I go.
And it may have been a different scenario, as he had mentioned, it was probably zoned strict industrial.
It was, they were trying to convert it over, and then nobody could do anything with the houses that were already there, and nobody was converting over to the industrial, so all the houses sat there.
That's how he's an island in the mid, middle of the year.
It's been an ongoing thing for twenty years, literally.
It's that whole South Broadway area, it actually, we, we, as a city have said, oh, let's have it go industrial, let's have it go a different direction. Now it's like, well, let's have it be a neighborhood, but.
Well, and if you look at the neighborhood around me, there's a lot of houses that are, there's forty by sixty sheds in their backyard, and they got a mobile home there, you know what I mean? So it's, it's not just a screwed up neighborhood, but I just wanna put a nice shed back there and get my garden stuff taken care of.
So the reason I asked about the slab is in your calculations, the slab was included in, in the number, correct?
In my impervious.
For the impervious, right?
Yes.
So he's still passed.
I'm at like forty-four percent, I think, on the impervious.
He passed, right?
Yeah, his variance is only, only for the size of the second structure.
If he is the second structure, all the different structures that are being counted right now are significantly over already, correct? The secondary structure problem, correct? In this sense, he's.
Yeah, if, if you consider the tents and stuff to be permanent structures.
Yeah, I know you're eliminating those.
This site has had some complaints on it over storage over the years.
That's where I went to the semi-trailers.
Significant the last couple of years, uh, I believe that.
Just trying to, you know, make use of the property because it's so limited otherwise.
I believe the removal of the multiple items that are out there right now and the addition of the new garage, the larger garage that he's requesting is to take care of those issues.
It's really not even gonna be a garage, I'm just gonna have a roll-up door on one end and a service door. It's more for storage of my garden stuff than it's gonna be anything, it's only three hundred square feet, so it's really fairly tiny, and I'm not even sure what the size of my other garage is, maybe fifteen by twenty-two, something like that?
Well, anyway, the, the idea is that you're trying to clean up the backyard, and there are things there that are gonna go, and you're gonna put this up and build in between them.
Correct, correct, correct.
And so.
And eliminate everything.
To me, it looks like a big plus, and if, and in the midst, for my purposes anyway, he's right in the middle of an area that I don't think this is an issue.
I'm not, I'm okay, I'm okay with it, I'm just not following the math, because on this, you have three hundred and twenty square foot, right? Plus the existing garage, three fifty-two. Where is, what, what else is being considered structure right now?
The house.
Oh, but it should be under the house, correct?
Right, so I have the home at, I have the home a little bit different numbers, I have the home at eight hundred and ten square feet.
Okay.
The existing garage at three hundred and sixty-five square feet, and the proposed shed at three twenty, so the shed and the existing garage would be six hundred and eighty-five square feet, the home's eight hundred and ten.
But the, the rule is that he's struggling with this, he's just can't have a second accessory building that's over a hundred and fifty square feet.
Second detached accessory building.
Yeah, he's asking for three hundred and sixty.
Different zone, yep.
Yeah.
There we go, I was like, what's going on?
Yeah, we're in our way here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right?
Questions?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he switched it again, so.
There'll be another one, yeah.
Well, hopefully I'll be done with it by then, so.
Thank you, sir, I think we'll deliberate amongst ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Is the, Dave, is the, is, are there orders to remove those other canopies or other things like that on the? Is the, Dave, is the, is, are there orders to remove those other canopies or other things like that on the property?
I'm not sure if there's orders.
Yes, I do have an order to remove the canopies.
You've got orders to remove the canopies. Okay, so, so this will be an improvement that I was going to say, if there weren't, then I would make that contingent upon a motion to approve it. But if it's, if the city's already working with you to get these out of there, then I'm okay with this. This is something we can improve to the, to the lay on of the property.
And keep in mind, part of his application is the submitted site plan showing the site relatively.
Yeah.
But the slab remaining.
That's the way we understand it.
Yeah. I'm okay with it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Hoy, seconded by Mr. Halverson to approve the variances requested for the Chestnut Street property. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You're good.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
You too. Number nine, another, another sign.
Not for sign, we've got a lot of signs.
Signs and accessory structures are the theme of the night.
I got some colored markings, hopefully you'll help out.
Yeah, you have those up on the screen.
Oh, you do, okay. So we're requesting two variances. These signs need all, all square footage and quantities. What we're trying to do is Imperial moved into this office space. They're taking up the whole space now. And we're, we're looking to take down this big tenant sign and replace it with this monument sign. All right, the variance is that we're only allowed six, six feet overall height. We're asking for 12, and on this one, seven foot six. They, they're pretty much equal size to what we're taking down. We think it fits nicely with the property. The only thing is we're looking for is a variance on the height. If these were, if we were allowed to make these pylon signs, we could make this 20 feet in height. So, you know, we're under there, but we thought this looked nicer than putting a pylon sign in the east corporate set. The second one is, we're only allowed one sign on, is this the east or?
It's the east.
Yeah, so we would like to put this entry sign. Basically, you can't see that sign from anywhere else unless you're walking in. So that's, that's a picture, pictures from the side. There's where the curve is, and you just can't see it unless you're actually walking in. So our, our other sign is going up here. This is for the road. The next sign is going down here.
For the foot traffic.
As for foot, as you come in, you're for the customers, and it's an international company. This is a nice little sign for them to see when they walk in. Leave that sentence, it's just two variants.
Well, it's, it's technically three, one for each one of the monument signs and then one for the wall sign.
But it's, it's both on the height.
Right, right, the same, same item.
Correct, correct.
Two locations.
The other thing about the six feet is, is this one sign is on the parking lot side. So if you park your car in front of this, you'll never see it at six feet. You know, or if you get an SUV or a truck, then it's going to disappear. We think this is, and again, it's a large property, and we're within the square footage. It's just, it's just a height issue that we're really looking at.
We don't have an alderman here to talk about this one. This one would have been one, would have been perfect to have a question. My own feeling on this, as I've expressed many times, is that sign ordinances are tough. It's up to us to decide if what's being composed and presented to us makes sense and is reasonably presentable, and I'm okay.
I think it looks a lot better.
Well, I do too.
For what we're taking down, you know, so.
I think it looks much better, and I appreciate the fact that there are variances required. But my gosh, to be able to write an ordinance that would anticipate all of these types of things is very hard.
It is. And if you drive around the neighborhood, there's a lot of big signs out there, and I think these are nice, they're subtle. Again, these things only light up, only the wording will light up, so it's not going to be overpowering.
I have no issue with it at all.
Okay, you can have a seat, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I assume we're in a violent agreement again?
I'll make a motion to approve.
One second. Okay, regarding the Imperial Supplies variance request for the property in Madison Street, we have a variance that's been, a motion that's been made by Mr. Babcock, seconded by Mr. Hoy to approve. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Long suffering, number 10, the last item on, on the night. This is the driveway widening.
Yes, well, we.
Well, we just bought this house in October, and this is the existing driveway.
See, right now, it's, it's all gravel, and the gravel actually comes up almost to the side door of the house. And they said we couldn't, over here, they said we couldn't put anything, pavers or blacktop or anything in because it's a corner lot. But we were using that, it was in a wheelchair.
Yeah, that was also.
And eventually this summer, we're going to be putting in a ramp. But what we're, you know, right now, the, the ordinance says we can come out two foot this side of the door, and that's all we can do. And what I want to do is bring it over to this door. And that way, we at least have this area because once I get the ramp in, we bring him down in the wheelchair. Got to be able to get around the van, and it'll give us more room.
We have to park the van.
And his daughter is also in a, uses a walker, so it would just give us more room. Like I say, originally, we were going to come all the way over here, but they said because it's a corner lot, we can't. So, but that's, right now, the, the ordinance says we have to come out to here, and what we're asking for the variance is to come over to this door. So they, they said we couldn't come all the way over to the third garage, but I thought even if we get this extra area for parking, that would, it would help.
And we are a handicapped family. My wife is also handicapped.
Yeah, she walks with a cane, so.
Okay, so I guess we see what you need, and the variance is that the driveway's too wide, David, and he's, he.
Well, we can't, that, that extra 11 feet is, by ordinance, we can only come two feet to the left side of the garage.
Okay, these are the variances, correct?
Two variance requests. One is to widen the driveway greater than the two feet, to widen that to 11 beyond the garage door. And the second is for parking in the front yard setback. That's, you have a 20-foot front yard setback. 20 feet in from the sidewalk is considered a required front yard.
Yeah, this, this is actually side yard.
As your.
Well, it's front because you're on a corner.
Front means fronting the street.
Oh.
So when, when you park in front of, not a garage door, that becomes a parking space, so that would be the second variance.
Both of which seem like reasonable to me, but do you have any questions for the other?
So does the, the space where I can see that black vehicle parked in the aerial, that goes away as a parking space?
Well, it'll have to. They said we can't.
You can't use that?
We can't use that, but once we put the ramp in anyway, the ramp will come down pretty much right next to there, to the driveway anyway, so we won't use that.
I got it.
So, you know, we're using that for groceries and unloading and.
Sure.
Also, the ordinance says it has to be concrete or blacktop.
Yep.
I can use, can I use concrete pavers?
His company sells concrete pavers.
I work for county materials.
For 4,000 pounds.
Yeah, well, you got, you guys have a requirement that it be paved.
It has to be paved. I believe Public Works can approve alternate paving materials, but they typically don't approve pavers. Pavers generally don't withstand vehicle usage unless they're pretty hardcore.
Well, if they're rated 28,000 or something.
Then Public Works is okay with them. They consider them to be paved surface.
So that would be good, so this, this must have been a really good house for you guys.
Oh, it's.
Well, it was.
Except for.
Well, it was.
We didn't even know about this until.
Yeah, we had no idea it had to be paved until February. We get a letter from the city, and it's, well, yeah, when we moved in, they had the gravel in, and I was going to bring in some, because I work for county materials, I was going to bring in some new road base and compact it, and, and it was perfect for the parking.
Yeah, you guys got blindsided in that, in that regard, but at the same time, you were, this is ideal for your situation.
Oh, yeah.
As long as we can take care of this.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of room here for what you need to have done.
One point that you probably want to have clarification, the submittal had two different documents. So the one on the left had the driveway going straight out, or the parking space was labeled B, going straight out to the sidewalk, which code does not permit. It has to taper five feet back. But the image on the right, which was also submitted, shows the five-foot taper. So just to make sure that that, I'm assuming the taper is going to be there, so you're not backing out onto the sidewalk?
Right.
Right.
But I've just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I was just, when I, when I did the one on the left, I was just showing the distance between the garage and the sidewalk.
But the, as far as the taper goes, the proposal is what's shown up here, right?
Um, yeah, except for the line, what I'm proposing to do is go right to the left side of that door.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, the parking thing, so the proposal's going to the left side of the door?
Yeah.
Is the goal that you're going to come in and park in front of that door?
Well, it's, what will happen is because you can see the stairs come down here for the upstairs.
Yeah.
Okay, and you've got about, roughly about a foot and a half, two foot of sidewalk right here. What I'm proposing to do is bring the driveway out here and then, you know, angle it out. But that's just so like when I pull in from work, I can pull over to the left a little bit. And when he's got the van here, we can move it over a little bit to get the wheelchair around it. You know.
And then the ramp is going to start working up right next to that staircase going up to the.
Right here, right here, this is the, the door going into the downstairs, and the ramp will come basically down here.
And, and come out right next to the, that stairs are fairly close.
Pretty, pretty close.
Right, right now, where I pull my van in, if the ramp was there, we couldn't get the wheelchair out.
Get in, get in and out, right, I get it.
The, the other thought of it is if you, so this is a quarter lot, okay? And this is kind of like the side street. We're looking at the side of the house.
Right, yes.
There's also a front to this, okay, that has a primary entrance. Because that was one of my concerns is, is we all know about the parking and the doors, right?
Yeah.
Okay, as far as the front door goes, this does not give them any problems.
Okay.
Okay. Cool.
You knew I was asking that question.
You know, we, this driveway has obviously not been paved for a very long time.
Ever.
Ever.
Yeah, well, right, and then, and then we've got a property turnover, and then, and then, and then orders to pave? Is that kind of how this has developed here, or?
I'm assuming so. I don't, I don't have.
Yeah, we received the letter.
Is like everybody in the neighborhood who's got a gravel driveway getting a letter telling them they're under orders to pave their driveway?
I live a block away. I got orders to remove a fence and do paving that was 20 years old, so it's possible.
So there's maybe something, so maybe there's some work going on in the neighborhood by the inspectors and they're casting orders out.
They do periodically pick segments of neighborhoods, and they drive through with inspectors. And they cite for peeling paint, you know, leaky gutters, bad fences, gravel mixed with concrete, can't, can't do that, you know, so, yeah. I don't know if it's driven by the sale of the property.
Okay.
Right, there's also, it's very typical for an inspector, if he goes out on a complaint, to do a 360.
Sure. Oh, there's something.
And we did get a complaint.
Yeah, one of our neighbors, every time we park in our driveway, was calling that we were parking on the grass because it wasn't paved.
Sure.
Okay.
I'm good.
Yeah, and that's over here for us, to help these clean up.
Very reasonable.
Thank you.
I, I would be willing to make a motion to approve the request and, you know, go on record that if it's acceptable at DPW, that we would accept pavers instead of a paved driveway in this instance.
That's fine. I would agree, yeah. All second?
No, you. That was no motion.
We'll, we'll, we'll take the motion from Noel and the second from Tom, and further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Look, I could ask a question, though.
Sure, sure.
Are there certain contractors we have to go with?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
If you're doing something on the other side of the sidewalk in the street, then you would have.
I just don't know if the city had.
And just to be clear, David, we were saying that, that additional 11 feet proper, taperly, tapers properly to the sidewalk as part of that approval too, right?
Yeah, you might want to submit a site plan to the inspectors to make sure that you're in step with what your concrete contractor is going to do with respect to what the city has.
Okay. They'll still have, they'll still have to go through the regular permitting process.
Okay. And the pavers thing.
Yeah, so I'm going to get estimates on paving and on concrete. Like saying, I know what.
That's a whole different process though, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a different department.
Yeah, so just make sure you guys walk away knowing that too, that the pavers thing, if you want to do, there's a, there's a different process to get that approved.
Okay.
If you want to use pavers, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, we qualified the variance just because it wasn't clear to us what surface you were doing. And we're saying we're okay with pavers if they are.
Okay.
We're not defined.
Mom says it's okay, dad says it's okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, motion to adjourn, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, we're adjourned.
So you got the variance?
Do you have a sign?